Seven PM, I'll call this meeting of the common council order. Please rise for funding meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move next to oral call from Treasurer Aldridge. Here on Pierce.
Richard Crager.
Present.
Brian Garrison.
Present.
Dale Seward.
Here.
Mike Shockley.
Present.
All right, we'll move next to a special report from Pastor Lee, Clerk Treasurer of the town of Camden. Ms. Cassily can tell us what's going on over there.
Yes, I can. Very happy to. Thank you for having me in tonight. I appreciate your interest in the town of Camden. Mayor Evans mentioned that you would be interested in hearing about the grants. So we do have three grants going on this summer. They come to a total of about eight-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars for what we're going to be doing. We have pretty well finished up the street grant with the money that we got from the state and our local match. It's about two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand that we do in the street work. That's going to take care of about twenty-nine blocks of street paving, a little sidewalk, a little risers, and that kind of thing to go along with it. Next year, we would do the remaining twenty-one blocks in Camden, and then Camden will have its streets taken care of. And the years after that, then we'll go back on to regular maintenance programs to clean the streets. We have a housing we have grant that the last draw was done last week. The vendors have, or the construction people have been paid, so we finished up with that grant. That grant was about, I'm sorry, the street grant was a hundred-and-ninety thousand. The housing grant was about two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. We did about ten homes. You have your old housing we have grant. The criteria is they have to give in the house, own the house, be current on taxes and insurance, and be income eligible. We did meet our income requirements. We had one very low-income person that we had a very hard time finding, but our grant said that we would service very low-income, so the person had to be eighteen thousand dollars a year for a less-end income and still live in the house, maintain the house. And we defined our person, so we did get forty-five of them back. This is our fourth round of Housing We Have Grant. We have received about nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars in housing we have money. We've serviced between thirty-five and forty homes. It's been a huge benefit to Camden. These are the favorite grants. When I got into office, I knew I wanted those grants because they help the people directly. We do the OCA grants for your water, your wastewater, we're going to be doing a stormwater. They benefit the people. But the housing we have grant benefits the people in their pocket, so they can see a change and a lot of benefits. I don't think we'll be doing another one for a while just because of getting the people that we qualify. They don't like to let me keep people. So it's going to take a while before somebody's done with that again. Our next grant will be our stormwater grant. That will be a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant with a hundred-thousand-dollar cash match. And just by a point of interest, we have not had the volume to do anything about grants because I did my hand, because our councils have always been extremely conservative financially, so we do have this cash to go to when we need it. The stormwater grant, we will have our pre-construction meeting this Friday, and then we should be able to get going on construction. They anticipate about nine months we'll have our stormwater done. This won't be the entire town, so we can reapply for this in about seven years to do this. There's a time length that OCA has on this, so we have a great plan to go. Since 1998, we first started giving grants, Camden's received a little over four million dollars in grants. I know you guys had your Stella grant. You got a lot of money. I was just reading the end. But for Camden, four million is pretty good in grants. We have one outstanding one, and that's in our wastewater department. We have to do wastewater project, we have to borrow a little money. With stormwater, we don't have to borrow any money off. Something new that we're going to be doing for our citizens. Has anybody approached you about Reach Alert, or do you, you Reach Alert, get information about? That's a program that we signed up for. It has little cost. First year's a dollar a resident, housework, after that, it's fifty dollars a year. But it's a way to communicate with the citizens. We're pretty excited about it. If we have a water order, we can specifically hit certain targets, the areas that people would know. It's going to come in handy for water shut-offs because we could say, hey, come on in, pay your bill if you want to shut off. So we're looking forward to getting that going. Oh, yeah, this year was our year to update our disaster plan manual. Camden has our own manual that we use. We keep a list for how to conduct ourselves if we have a disaster and who we're doing what activities need to be done. But we list who in the community might have equipment that we need, so that then if one comes up, we're not stumbling around looking for phone numbers and who to contact. A few years back, we had a snowstorm, and so we called, and we didn't have any power. Light was coming on, and it was getting cold. We called down for a generator, and the response was, this is a snowstorm. And that's, we need to be a little more prepared. And that's when we started setting up the community building as an emergency shelter and a very class. So it's one of those things to learn and be a little more prepared for the next time. Y'all know that we have a G project that we're working on. I really don't have an update that I can give you tonight on that, other than to say that there's things going on in the background work, and it's still coming as far as we know.
What did you say, call that last company?
The G.
G.
That's the recycle project.
And the other one, what did you call it? The one where people put in a dollar?
Oh, the people don't, the town's case, they're that. It's Reach, R-E-A-C-H.
A Reach.
Yeah. Do you have any questions on what's going on here in Camden? Do you have any more?
How is the recycle plant? Is there any forward motion on that between Camden and Flora? That you could invite or fill in?
Not this time, no. But thank you for asking.
Any other questions for Clerk Treasurer? Pastor Lee? Sorry, I couldn't say what you were going to ask.
And of course, we're working on all that shit. She doesn't make much of a change.
Are there any public comments, questions? If you don't mind answering?
I'd love to talk about Camden. Any questions, I mean?
Well, thanks, Pat, for coming in. We're appreciative.
Appreciate you thinking about Camden. It's very nice of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move next to the minutes from July 2nd, 2018. Are there any additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments to be made to this set of minutes? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Okay.
There's a motion to a second to approve the minutes from July 2nd, 2018. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move next to written and oral reports from committee boards, commissions, and department heads. Chief Holland, would you like to supplement your report?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes. Did they get?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, so you can see in the report, we had forty-four-hundred-and-sixty-one miles driven this month, and forty-four case reports, twenty-two citations, six crash reports, and fifteen parking tickets, two handgun licenses, news releases. Tell a lot. We've been very busy this last month. There are things going on, and you have the arrest report, and also call for service log. Not much else to report. Just getting married for old settlers is coming up, and then, of course, the day confessed like in this one.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Superintendent Lyons?
Good evening. I don't have any in the ads in the report. I'll just note, as you see before you, we completed the rehabilitation of this suspension vertical trailhead. We replaced all the deck boards, hand rail, things of that nature. It's a little straighter, a little truer, a little saper, so that's been completed. The board block in Riley Park has been completely power washed, and suspension version power wash, the paint boards replaced, and then also. I'll let you know, the cameras in Riley Park, City Park, and that's it at the moment. Those cameras that were installed from the grant, those are up and running in those two parks. But the others coming, hopefully this week. Contractor should be in this week to finish those up, hopefully. And then, we've got approximately twelve people signed up for some sidewalk. Hopefully, that'll start at the end of the month versus September, depending on the contractor's schedule of time.
Where do those cameras feed to?
Locally. There's a DDR housed within the kiosks, so if there was ever a need to access the, you know, police department has a key. They can go into those DDRs and go back for, for data and recording or something.
Any other questions for Superintendent Lyons?
How'd you, door-to-door, how'd you find the twelve?
I wrote a letter to the mayor and sent it back.
Thank you, Superintendent. Superintendent Myers?
Excuse me just a second, Erin. Is it too late then for the sidewalks? Are you thinking about it?
No, I wouldn't say it's too late. My only problem would be is depending on when the contractor gets in here. I've lost my summer help. If we approach September, I've got to get it done. We're still putting some things up in the parks that I like to accomplish, but then we get into fall, and then we get real busy again because of the leaves, so it's not too late. Would I want another fifteen or twenty more? That'd be a problem. I mean, if another one or two came through, I think we could probably get it in there and get it done.
And what's the rule, what's the regulations again? It's?
Cost.
It's fifty-fifty.
It's fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty for the sidewalk. Maybe a hundred percent, and then pass the red line. And then, within the right ways, fifty percent. If they got questions, they can call me, send me an email. I can meet them, run up there, measure it up, and get them this to that.
Erin, how much money do you have in your budget for your fifty-fifty? Do you remember?
Well, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. So I think with everybody that we've got figured in, we have about eighty-two left.
Thank you. Any other questions for Superintendent? Thank you, sir. Superintendent Myers?
Evening. I will just highlight a few things. We pumped a total of twenty-nine million, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand last month. ITC's twenty-three million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven, seven-hundred-and-seventy-two. Probably seen the guys out painting fire hydrants, touching them all up, making them look pretty. You might have seen Emmy Simpson out doing her valve exercising program, finishing that up. Now, they did half of them last year, a little over half last year. This year was everything kind of on the South Hill. They finished that up. And we had a couple of water leaks. We did do a valve insertion on South Union Street to disconnect a little two-inch line that runs up Riley Road. And that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you, Superintendent. Superintendent Mansel?
Good evening. Mayor, did you say that they did not get?
No, they did. The board did. So they haven't got them.
Oh, okay. Long to be looking at what I'm reading here. There's a short report, but as I explained, the Board of Works, plans are continuing for the construction of the phosphorus reduction facility that we have to have at the plant. We need to have construction started by September. This is as for our new permit. And I think after that, we've probably got six to eight months before we have to have it completed. We are a major plant because we do a million gallons a day, so everybody in that category is under the phosphorus rules, which you have to keep it under one-point-zero milligrams per liter. And we're going to use a, it's called sodium lumenate. We've done a pilot study. Reported on that before. So we know what we're going to use. It's just getting this building put together, get the plumbing right. We know where we're going to introduce it. I don't think we're going to have any real issues. This morning's phosphorus going out was one-point-five, one-point-six, so it's not like we don't have to go very far for it, but it is going to be in our permit, or it is in our permit. Just have to keep it under a monthly average.
So the building down there, I mean, out there at your plant site?
Yeah. You familiar with the plant? Well, we have the two round tanks with the clarifiers. Really, the only viable place that we have without moving it a long ways is beside the west clarifier. We have to fill a little bit in, put the building. The building is slated to be sixteen by thirty-two, I believe. Something in those dimensions. We're going to need water, and it's going to have electric, and there's not a lot to it. It's got to have heat. It's a kind of a corrosive liquid, so we'll have to have an emergency shower, an eye wash, some other things. I'm working with them to keep everything affordable. Unfortunately, it is what it is, and we have to, we have to get this thing built. The other thing is Cotty Street, the electricity is virtually all done, except for some disconnected fuses that need to be upgraded. One pump, we still have some issues with air, but we'll get those worked out. Took a long time. I thought it would be done March or April. There we are in August, so we'll spend some time.
Questions?
Thank you, Superintendent. You have my report. It was pretty hasty to put together. I did it Saturday morning before that fly-in, which, Councilman Seward, you were out at the fly-in. It was a good event, the Black Hawk helicopter flying in, taking off. It was real neat. T-6 Texan was there again this year, a few parachuters, a lot of biplanes, probably three or four biplanes. It was a pretty neat event. Bulk of July, I spent, I was looking at water finances. I don't have that done yet. I kind of went off of that to start working on the budget, which you should. We see it Friday. Beyond that, pretty normal stuff in the bulk of July. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Clerk Treasurer Aldridge, you have any more to report?
No, no.
Move next to area planning commission report. Councilman Seward?
We had a very short meeting up against the city of Delphi, so really nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Community survey report. Councilman Shockley?
We finished up the wall, and the building is done, completely done on the inside. That's about all I can say right now.
Any questions for the councilman? Move next, proposed ordinance 2018-3B, read by Title I, ordinance regarding short-term rentals within the city of Delphi. This is the third and final reading of proposed ordinance. Is there any discussion from the council? Is there a motion to pass proposed ordinance 2018-3, version B, on third and final reading?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We'll move next, and this wasn't in your packet, but it's really no different than the ordinance that we have now. Last month, we talked about changing the meeting times. It should have been on your desk when you got here today. So really, the ordinance is already set up pretty well. The only difference would be the time that we insert for the regular meetings to be held. So I'll just read a little part of it. Regularly stated meetings of the common council shall be held at blank PM on the first Monday of each month. So we had some discussion. I couldn't remember where we left it last month as to the time the council wants to meet. Move it up earlier in the day so there's less lag between board meeting and council meeting, and so council, the department heads, the public, whoever else is here can get out a little earlier. So is there a discussion about what time the council would like to see?
The board work finished, or the board?
Right now, it starts at 5:30. We probably wouldn't push it back. Be five at the earliest, probably 5:15 would be advisable.
Why could it not be pushed to six or something?
Oh, we totally could. It'd be a lot easier. We wouldn't have to ask an ordinance or anything, but I, actually, a member of the public brought it up as an idea last month that we could push the council up an hour, back an hour or how.
The only problem with that is you get into 5:15, 5 o'clock, you're precluding people. I realize I'm not meant to come, but you're precluding some people from being able to attend your board of work. That would be the only thing that would concern me.
If we did 5:15 and set the council at six, I think that would be?
I think you're, I don't know. A lot of people get off work at five, and I don't know if they could be here at 5:15.
So 5:30 and 6:15?
Why not have six and seven or something? It seems like that would be a simpler. I just hate changing the council meeting when people grow to expect it at seven. I realize the advantage of getting out of here earlier, but that's what we're here for, so.
Six and seven wouldn't be bad.
I'm good either way. Really doesn't matter to me. First Monday of the month, I'm going to come when you tell me to be here.
I would agree, six and seven. So, but you might.
I'd agree with it, but counting.
We won't do anything. Consider proposed ordinance 2018-10 not even included. That's the business that was on the agenda for the day. Update on water and sewer project. Like I said, I'm working on the financial analysis, going back to 2013 expenditures. I'm trying to get them all categorized, anticipate what they'll be in the future, as well as whatever operation maintenance we have if we move forward with the project. There's a possibility we'll have a special council meeting later this month to discuss the water project. Got to coordinate with Father Baron Cypher and Numball on that. I'll continue to work on that financial analysis as I get a chance. Budget's set back a little bit on time, so probably Wednesday I'll start looking on that again. Do you guys have any questions regarding any progress?
What was the percentage rate that was coming in in July? What was that? What did that come in at?
Twenty-three to twenty-nine for gallons or?
No, 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 the percentage rate for the, the?
Bond.
The bond.
I haven't heard yet. I talked to Numball on the phone last week or before, and I don't think they had an update. So that's something to check into.
Supposed to be out in July, I believe.
I thought they said July 2nd. Any other questions?
Not related to that, but I, there was a report from the Parks Advisory Board in our packet, and I just wondered what the recreation, do you have any of those figures, Erin, on what the attendance was for that parks and recreation?
I do know.
I can get that. And they did, this year, they've only held the one, the summer rec program. Last year, they had summer rec, and then the winter activities, a couple of open gyms, and then moving out of the school. I can get you the summer rec numbers?
Well, I read the recommendation of just putting it on the city budget, and, you know, there's surely kids coming for summer rec that are from Deer Creek Township. Not everybody's probably within the city limits. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't, but I would see nothing wrong with still asking Deer Creek to support it some way, and the city support it, I mean, half and half, or two-thirds and one-third or something, but, you know, to be fair, the taxpayer shouldn't, I mean, every person in the county can use all the parks, and yet, the city taxpayer pays everything for the parks. It's just not a very fair system that the city taxpayer gets hit for everything, and, you know, why not let Deer Creek Township contribute if they're willing? That's just my thought with that, when I saw what their recommendation was. Let's not ask Deer Creek to help while they've helped for years and years, very willingly, so why not let them continue to bear some of the financial burden of that?
That's all. Any other questions before we go to council comments?
Council comments? President Proton, Pierce?
I guess that's, I don't have anything further, I don't think.
Thank you. Councilman Crager?
Nothing.
Councilman Shockley?
Nothing.
Councilman Seward?
Nothing.
Councilman Garrison? Clerk Treasurer comments?
Clerk Treasurer Aldridge?
Public comments? Really sudden record here, Mike. Okay, before we leave, there's one thing, I wanted to, there's multiple things. Don't just run right out of billing. We've got some stuff to sign from last month and minutes. Next week, we have the work sessions for Monday and Tuesday night. For some reason, when we scheduled the one for Monday night, we scheduled it for 6:30. I think that was my mistake in that I had a board meeting on that night, so we're going to put it after the board meeting. Would the council entertain setting it for 5:30? Last year, we got it done in one night. Not saying that we could get it done in one night this year, but would the council entertain having it at 5:30 next Monday as opposed to 6:30?
I'm okay with it. I'm okay.
Any questions?
Five thirty?
Can we get a motion for that?
About those Monday budget meeting be set for 5:30.
Is there a second?
Third.
You have a question, Mr. Garrison? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Diadegway, now, Mrs. Smith, would you like to?
So we've got Monday and potentially Tuesday also at 5:30.
Correct.
I think we need to plan for Tuesday as well, because budgets are really the most important thing that we do, and I would like time to consider it, give it the importance that it deserves. And so, you know, if we hear the proposals, then we can make decisions. And so, you know, if we hear the proposals, then, and we can make decisions, I think, not spur of the moment decisions, so.
Any other discussion on meeting time or anything further that we didn't address? Hearing none, there's one last motion to be made. Is there a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just keep it hot in here. Everybody's showing up. You figured it tricked out.
It really was cool, everything.
It really was. I just thought the board of work was.